This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held on Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. I want to also add, on behalf of the Board, that our Chair, Barry Roy, stepped down at the end of last year. He's served on the zoning board for over thirty years. There's just no way to adequately thank someone who's given that kind of time and effort to the benefit of our community. But I want to at least take a moment to acknowledge his contribution and thank him publicly on the record. The Board has elected a new Chair, and that's Stephen Cohen, and Vice Chair, and that's me, Eve Coulson. I'm chairing tonight as Mr. Cohen is out of town. So Claudia, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davidge?
Here.
Mr. Floy?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Mr. Valvani?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Perrin-Lambrose?
Here.
Thank you.
So, we have no minutes to approve this month, but we do have some resolutions to memorialize before we get to tonight's applications.
Ms. Coulson? Did you read the opening statement?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Then I missed it, I apologize.
So, the first one is adopting the 2018 Annual Report. Are there any changes or corrections, comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Could you call the roll, please? Yes.
Mr. Davidge?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Am I allowed to? Who isn't here?
Is a resolution adopting the report?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is memorializing the case, which is 22 Henderson Avenue, file Any comment, any corrections? Do I have a motion to accept?
Yeah, motion accepted.
Second?
Second.
Claudia, you want me to go through? I'll go through the list of members who can vote. Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davidge?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, the next one is 35 Sargent Street, file number Z-1818-655. Any comments or corrections? Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Acceptance.
Second?
Thank you.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, the last one is, and then we'll get on to our applications for tonight, the last one is 167 Laurel Circle, file number Z-1818-657. Any corrections, comments? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Approved.
I think, is this an appropriate time to mention the one that is not on our case, on our list at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so before we actually consider the first one on the list, which is Ridgeview Road, this morning, Mr. Bridger informed me that the application regarding 48 Duran is no longer requires a variance because of the recently revised parking five-foot setback changes. So, the applicant has been notified, and I'm just mentioning it so that everybody here knows, in particular, if there's anybody from the public who was going to comment or was interested in the case. And so, that's all I had to say about that. So, the first application on our list tonight is 394 Ridgeview Road. I believe Mr. Dumont was going to speak to us about the current status of that. And would he not need to be sworn in? Is there anything we need to do before that? No?
It's fine.
Okay.
Yes, I'm John Dumont. I'm the attorney for 394 Ridgeview. We have been, is it, oh, I'm sorry, John, you just gotta get closer. Is it this now? Can you hear me?
Better.
Okay. Yes, this application has been before the Board, twice before, and last meeting, there were neighbors from surrounding properties who wished to have, wished to testify us to the application. Since that meeting last month, we have met with the neighbors, who formed an organization called Friends of Princeton Ridge. They have expressed an interest in buying the property from my client, and my client is willing to sell the property, provided we have a reasonable purchase price. So they are in the process of looking for sources of funding, and we have agreed to a 30-day extension, and so we are asking that this matter be carried from this meeting date to the next meeting date, when we can come back and report to you what progress we have made with the Friends of Princeton Ridge, and we will go from there. But I don't think there's anything further tonight, other than just telling you that we are making progress, the parties are working together, and they have said they would like to have a win-win situation, and certainly, we would too.
Board members, just so, we need to announce then that it'll be carried to the February 27th meeting. That way, the applicant does not have to notice again, since we're making that announcement. And Mr. Dumont, the Board then will need an extension for hearing the application. Do you want to give us an extension to March 1st? That should clear the 27th date. All right.
Do we need to do anything as a Board, or we just?
No, but you're all, I assume everybody's in agreement to carry the application. No objections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we may be the next application, so.
All right. Okay, so the next application before us is 801 State Street. So I guess, whoever the attorney and whoever the experts are that are involved, remind me your name, sir?
Richard Schatzman, attorney for the applicant. We have one expert tonight, David Schmidt, who's a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Could swear him in.
I guess, actually, we need to start with Mr. Bridger's report, and you need to be sworn in first.
Very thorough report, and Mr. Schmidt will supplement his report with a few odds and ends, and I'll just talk about the variance aspects of the case.
Mr. Bridger? Okay, Mr. Bridger, before we swear you in, I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order, and the Board has jurisdiction to hear the application. Mr. Bridger, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Excuse me. Brandon Real Estate has filed a minor site plan application with a use variance D1 to permit the temporary storage of 75 cars on an existing gravel parking lot at the property known as 801 State Street. It's in the S2 zone. The lot contains 2.309 acres, and the site is currently a vacant gravel parking lot. Properties to the north, south, and west are commercial properties in the S2 zone, and the property to the rear of the site is residential R2 zone. The applicant was granted a minor site plan approval in 2016 to permit the storage of 91 to 100 automobiles at 775 State Road. This is the adjacent lot immediately to the north. This site was the subject of an approval to site plan in 2017 by the planning board for a Bottle King liquor store. The applicant removed the automobiles from this site at the request of Bottle King when they began to prepare the site for development. The cars were moved to their current location in approximately February 2018. The applicant was advised in March 2018 of the need to file for a use variance and associated site plan, and shortly thereafter submitted the required documents. The applicant is proposing to use the existing gravel parking area to store approximately 75 new cars for a period of six months to a year, until their new facility is completed in Montgomery Township. This subject lot was granted a use variance by this Board and the associated site plan approval to permit a mixed-use shopping center. The storage of automobiles would continue until the owner of the property begins the development of the approved shopping center, or one year, whichever is less. The subject property is located in the S2, and it's subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 246-255. In 2004, the adjacent property owner applied to the zoning board for an interpretation regarding the use of the site as an auto repair shop and the short-term car rental and outdoor car storage. The Board concluded that the proposed uses of outdoor storage of motor vehicles and the short-term car rentals were pin-ridded accessory uses to commercial garages within the S2 zone. The proposed site does not have a commercial garage, and the proposed storage of vehicles is a permitted use when there is a commercial garage on-site, and it's my opinion and interpretation that the proposed use requires a zoning use variance in accordance with NJ SA 40:55D-71. And as the Board knows, no variance or other relief may be granted under the terms of this subsection unless such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and will not harm or substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Following items should be taken into consideration when reviewing the use variance. The applicant has a burden of demonstrating special reasons for the granting of the variance, as well as the negative criteria. And I would just like to say, although it is a site plan, there aren't any site improvements, so to speak. If the Board is inclined to approve the application, we would ask that, there is a time limit on it, and if it does extend past that time period, and they need to store it longer than 12 months, we would request that they come back to the Board for an extension. That's the synopsis of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yes, you want to swear, Mr. Schmidt, please?
Mr. Schmidt, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt, you want to give us your professional background?
I'm David J. Schmidt. Reside at 77 Carnes Place, a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing engineering for 32 years. I've been a licensed professional engineer for 22 years. I have been in front of the planning board and zoning boards in Princeton, Montgomery, Franklin Township, Hillsborough Township are my most areas that I concentrate in, and land use is my area of expertise.
And you have actually viewed the site?
I have.
And you're familiar with the Princeton municipality's zoning and planning ordinances?
Ah, yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the municipal land use laws of the state of New Jersey?
Ah, yes, I am.
And the plans were either prepared by you or under your direction?
Under my direction.
Okay. I submit that Mr. Schmidt is an expert in professional engineering, and can offer opinions as to certain aspects of the site, and answer any questions you may have. Now, he's going to give an overview of the site, and I will fill in briefly after that on the variance review, some of the things that Mr. Bridger has said, plus the reasons why we think there's special reasons, and the lack of the negative criteria, that is, it's not a substantial detriment to zone plan, master plan, and general welfare of the municipality of Princeton.
I will begin. We have up on the easel here is a plan that was submitted to all the zoning board members, and to Derek, and to Jack West. It is a parking use plan. It was prepared by my office, dated March 22nd, 2018. I will give it to Claudia for an exhibit, but it really isn't a new exhibit. You want me to label it, but it's part of the submission package. This is Brandon Real Estate Development LLC. It's 801 State Street, Route 206. It's Block 901, lots 17 and 18, file number Z-1818-598 PM. It's in Princeton, New Jersey. Lot area, as Derek said, is 2.309 acres. The zone is District 2, Service District 2. The property is located on the east side of State Highway Route 206, just south of Harretown Road. On the top of the plan, you have State Highway Route 206. A little bit over on this side is Harretown Road, and the subject property is right here, as I'm pointing to it. You have STS on across the street, a little bit south to it. So it's adjacent to the Bottle King, which should be under construction next month. It's a vacant lot, as Derek said. The property currently has compacted gravel in front and the portion, and it has wooded perimeter. So just in this area right here, we're storing 75 cars. Perimeter is all wooded. In this area where it's heavily treed is the Van Horn Brook. The Van Horn Brook then gets piped through the property, and then it exits out to Harretown Road, Harretown Road. So you have a little bit of a stream in this area, and then it's piped. The water flows in an easterly direction down to the Brook. We're not changing any of the drainage patterns. We're not adding any increase in impervious surface coverage. Basically, we're just utilizing the existing gravel that is in place. There are wetlands, wetland buffers, and 100-year floodplain. The gravel is outside those areas, and we are storing the cars within the gravel, which is outside the critical areas. The applicant is requesting approval for a minor site plan approval with bulk variance for storage of 75 automobiles. It's anticipated that we will store the cars no more than one year, as a new car dealership is being constructed in Montgomery Township. All proposed temporary parking will be restricted to the existing gravel areas. Most of the property frontage along State Road is gravel. So basically, in this whole area right here, you can enter the site pretty much anywhere, but there are two areas that are primed for coming in and out. When storage cars are coming in, or the tractor-trailer comes in, he pulls off of Route 206 onto the gravel area, and then unloads the car into the gravel portion of the site. The existing site distances from all the entrances or the whole gravel area are satisfactory. Bottle King and also State Road Plaza received NJ DOT approval, which means that the site access has positive site distances, so cars entering and exiting the site have safe scene distance to exit the site. The existing drainage patterns, as I mentioned, are not altered. This application, the drainage patterns are staying the same. As I mentioned before, and Derek mentioned, we received a use variance from Montgomery Township, which was granted for a 28,719-square-foot automobile dealership, which will provide parking of 304 cars. This was approved by Montgomery Township. We're in the process of finalizing those plans for construction. So once these are, once the site plan is constructed, we will move the cars over there, which we are anticipating will be completed by a year-end. Also, Lot 17 and 18, which is this property right here, of Lot 901, received approval for a commercial shopping center, which was the State Road Plaza. All approvals are in place for this, and the applicant may have to remove the cars if Ed Bucy, who is the owner of the property, decides that he wants to construct the site earlier than later. In discussion I had with Ed Bucy a couple of months ago, he's hoping that the construction of the Bottle King, which is just south of his site, will hopefully, with land development going on there, that that might promote some interest in tenants into his property, because that is what he's waiting for. He's short on tenants, so that's why he's renting this property out to us, and he's hopeful that, once the Bottle King kicks in, that will increase the need for tenants to the adjacent site. I don't believe we need any other approvals for the site. The site, State Road Plaza received all the approvals that needed, and I don't see that, since we're not proposing anything, we're just utilizing the gravel, that there's no need for additional agency approvals. And that's all I have.
The only other thing, Mr. Schmidt, is you called it a both C variance, it's actually a D1 variance, because it's an accessory use that's permitted, but it's used as a principal use, and that becomes a D1 variance, so just to correct the record. Okay, any questions for Mr. Schmidt, and I'll just go over briefly some things in Mr. Bridger's report that he didn't cover, and also give the reasons why we think there's special reasons, and why there's a lack of the negative criteria.
I have a question regarding your conversations with Mr. Bucci. Do you have a draft agreement, and if so, what's the timeframe of the leasing of the land?
What's that? I'm sorry.
That would be, yeah, he did the agreement with, had.
Yeah, it's a month to month, so he can give us 30 days' notice. If he needs, if Bucy needs it, he gives us 30-day notice, and we've got to move it. We'll find it, we'll have to just find another space, because that's the deal. We pay rent to him, I mean, he's not doing it for free, and because it's commercial, there's no, what they call the tenant's bill of rights doesn't apply. So that's the 2A 18 hyphen 61.1, gives all the reasons why you have to, what reasons you have to give to remove a residential tenant. But that doesn't apply. We're a commercial, we're storing cars. To give us 30 days' notice, we have to go.
Okay, thank you.
Many other questions? All right, then, as Mr. Bridger pointed out, this is a temporary, and as Mr. Schmidt points out, this is a temporary use. It's up to a year, sooner, if we have to get out, we'll get out. The particular suitability is, the property is a parking lot with gravel, and it, under 4055D2G, promotes sufficient space to provide for a commercial use, and the fact that it is a temporary use under a case called Bell Atlantic versus Riverdale Zoning at 352 NJ Super 407, a appellate division case in 2002, that ought to be considered by you in the special reasons findings, and also a lack of the negative criteria. As far as that's concerned, Mr. Bridger points out in his memorandum, if I may, 5.0 on page 2, ecological considerations. No detrimental ecological effects are anticipated from the temporary storage of new automobiles, landscape. Due to the limited short-term nature of the application, no landscaping is proposed. Relation to proposed structures to the environment, the existing gravel parking area encroaches onto the 50-foot riparian zone and the wetlands transition area, there are no new encroachments proposed, as testified to by Mr. Schmidt. No cars are being parked in those areas. Scenic historical architectural landmark sites, the proposal site is not, the proposed site is not located in a historic district, and does not contain any state or federal designated sites. Surface water drainage, the property drains from west to east to the Van Horn Brook, which runs through the property. There is no new impervious coverage, as testified to by Mr. Schmidt. Proposed, and therefore, stormwater management is not required. Driveway connections to public streets, currently, there is no defined driveway into the site. If you looked at the site, you could see you can enter and exit on the 206. The applicant should demonstrate how automobiles are off-litted and to site. The proposed use is not anticipated to have a substantial impact on traffic. I believe that the former application concerning Mr. Bucy, who is testimony by their traffic engineer, that it was he, and that was acceptable, and here, it's just cars that are primarily stationary, for the most part. And Mr. Schmidt testified that the trucks, the cars come on, the truck carrying the cars come onto the site, drop off the cars, and then leave. So there's no interference with State Road or Route 206. Pedestrian and bicycle safety, no new sidewalks, bikeways, or bike racks are proposed as part of the application. On-site parking and calculation, the applicant is not proposing any changes in the existing gravel parking area, and again, the cars will be parked in the parking area with the gravel on, under it. Utility services, no new utility connections are proposed as part of the project. And disposal of waste, there will be no staff on-site, and therefore, no, the applicant is not proposing waste disposal facilities. Staff would recommend that a trash receptacle be placed onsite for employees that are dropping off or parking up cars. That would be an acceptable condition to the applicant if you approve this application. We do know that under the ST zone, you have a 60-foot setback, and we would comply with that 60-foot, so we would need a C1 or a C2 variance for that. Noise, the applicant shall comply with the applicable noise when there's requirements. That's agreeable. Advertising features, none proposed. Special features, none proposed. Waterway corridors, not, Van Horn Brook flows through the property, and we're not disturbing that or any flood areas of that. Special technological impacts, none proposed. And to finish up his report that he goes over, he talks about other approvals, Mercer County Planning Board. We don't need that, because there's no County Culver or County Road, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. We're not going into any stream corridors or flood areas, the NRC Commission, if required. We're not, we're exempt from that. And NJ DOT, previously, the other application for the shopping center that was granted by this Board in 2017, there's no new cut, and therefore, we don't need NJT approval. And the applicant should advise the Board of the progress of construction at his new automobile dealership in Montgomery Township. Mr. Schmidt testified that we're on our way to providing final construction plans for that, and we should be completed within the year. And again, it's the C2 zone, where, because of the interpretation granted by this Board as mentioned by, under its speed powers, mentioned by Mr. Bridger, storage of cars is an acceptable accessory use, but we're using it as a principal use, that's why we need a D1 variance. And it's temporary, and it's, the particular suitability is, is that it's a parking, the lot is a parking lot with gravel. And no new improvements are anticipated or structures constructed, and we think we've met our burdens of proof for the granting of a D1 variance. The C2 zone is not a residential zone, it's primarily a commercial zone. The reason you granted, the Bucy application was before here, was because there was a restaurant proposed in a shopping center, as well as retail and office spaces, and since restaurant is not a permitted use in the SD zone, they had to come here. But again, we're not trying to put cars in a residential zone, we're basically putting cars, storage cars temporarily in a commercial zone. That's our case.
Are there any... Are there any, is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment? If so, if you'll come forward and swear you in. Thank you to my president. How did Ed Bucy know that the lot, the lot was a critical?
Sir, 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 before you continue testifying, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to see this continue till we can get some tenants. We've been trying to get tenants, but it's kind of slow with the holidays and stuff. It's been slow coming, so this would be a big help to me, to carry on till we get some tenants, and then, it's month-to-month rent, so it's not a, we'd like to see it go up, but...
We'll have to work that one out, Eddie.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, I think, at this point, do we want to go into executive session? Okay. Anyone have any, what do we think about this?
It seems reasonable, given if we impose the conditions suggested by Mr. Bridger.
Other thoughts? Any concerns?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. Does anyone want to, do we need to do something else before we would make a motion, or?
No.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
I would move to approve the application, subject to a limitation of twelve months for the use.
You want to add in the trash receptacle request?
Yeah.
And the inclusion of a trash receptacle onsite.
Anything else?
I'll second.
Do we have a, we have a second? Okay, so we have a second to that motion?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Our next case to consider is one fifty-nine Snowden Lane, with the case number Z one eight one eight dash six five four.
Be nice, yeah.
You ready, Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, again, my name is John Dumont, and I'm attorney for the applicant here. I must say that it's nice to see Mr. Schatzman here, the attorney before me. Mr. Schatzman and I are probably the two oldest attorneys still practicing in Princeton, so...
Okay.
Well, I was just congratulating Mr. Schatzman on his presentation, because as I said, he and I are probably the two oldest attorneys in Princeton still practicing, so, and I do recall, on a sad note, years ago, there was an attorney in Princeton who was making a presentation to the, to the planning board, and actually had a heart attack during the presentation and passed away, so we hope you're not too hard on us tonight. But, to get on to the application...
I think do no harm applies to zoning board members, too. We'll try.
Okay. This is one fifty-nine Snowden Lane. This lot is in the shape of a trapezoid.
Mr. Dumont, before you continue, I think the board will hear from Mr. Bridger first, and I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oriole Homes LLC is the owner, and Kevon Adon is the applicant, seeking a hardship variance C one to permit the development of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Lot does not meet the required lot area, and additional variances are required for lot width and front yard setbacks. Subject property is located in the R five zone, and is subject to the use and bulk regulations in accordance with ten B two fifty-three, two fifty-five, and two forty-six of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The required lot area for this zone is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet, or half acre. The existing lot area is sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one square feet. The existing single-family home will be demolished, and a new structure will be constructed. The new single-family dwelling will be required to meet all the applicable setbacks and bulk requirements, or seek additional variance relief. The applicant should advise where they have contacted adjoining property owners, and offered either to sell the subject property, or to inquire if they would have land to sell to the applicant to create a complying lot. You might be familiar with this property, it was before the board in two thousand fifteen for a lot area variance and a forty-foot front yard setback variance to permit the construction of a new single family dwelling. The variance expired, and an extension was approved on two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand sixteen. The extension granted the same relief and expired after one year. It's my understanding that property has been sold from those previous owners to the current owner, and he is seeking variance relief for lot area, the front yard setback, and lot width, so just to run through the variance, lot area requirement is twenty-one seven eighty. The existing is sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one square feet. The front yard setback, based on the prevailing, is a sixty-one foot minimum prevailing front yard setback. The existing is thirty-nine point seven, and they are requesting a forty-one foot front yard setback. And then finally, they're requesting a lot width from the required one-hundred-foot requirement. The existing is plus or minus ninety-five feet, and they are proposing ninety-eight point seven feet. They've requested consideration under the C one variance, and if you have any questions, be glad to address them.
I think that, I don't want to repeat everything that Derek Bridger has said, but this is a vacant lot at the present time, and that it is undersized. There is, it's undersized by several thousand square feet, and the issue that we have is that we are asking a variance, but we cannot, one of the conditions or questions that this board always has is, have you tried to reach out to the neighbors, and have any of the neighbors indicated a willingness to either buy or sell the lot? When we noticed our application to the two-hundred-foot neighbors, we also enclosed, offered to sell the property to any of the interested parties, and I believe that we have not had any homeowner who has come up and has said that they are interested in purchasing the lot. In terms of our being able to purchase property from other property owners, the other lots in the area, most of them do conform to the minimum lot size, but if they should convey to us sufficient land to make our lot conforming, it would probably make all those lots non-conforming. So, there's no way that we can acquire land and not have those lots become non-conforming. The lot is shaped in the, in the shape of a trapezoid, it's wider at the front and narrow at the back, and that is what creates some of the hardship as far as lot width, excuse me, as far as the lot width and the front yard setback. Our engineer will discuss those aspects of the application. We have also, well, go ahead, Frank, why don't you take it from here, in terms of explaining the variances.
Mr. Falcone, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Frank, have you testified before this board before?
Several times, yes.
And you're a professional engineer and planner?
I'm a, I'm a professional land surveyor and a professional planner. I have been licensed since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been with Princeton Junction Engineering since nineteen seventy-seven. I guess we'll mark this as exhibit A one, and A one is a rendering of the site plan, overall site plan that was submitted in the application package. It is a thirty-scale plan, and the purpose of this plan is to show the subject lot, which is in green in the center, and its relationship to the surrounding structures within two-hundred feet plus of the property. As was indicated, the minimum lot size is twenty-one seven eighty, which is one-half acre. It is sixteen nine sixty-one, I believe. It's deficient by about forty-eight hundred square feet. It had a detached garage and a house, which was up against the northerly property line, that's actually closer to Snowden Lane than what we're proposing, and that has since been demolished. The proposed house is forty-one hundred and forty-three square feet, and it is in character with many of the houses that are in this area. I did a reconnaissance of the neighborhood today, there's a lot of construction activity going on. There are several houses that are as large or larger than the house that we're proposing. The first variance has to do with the, what's called the mean prevailing setback, which is the average of the setback within a block. And this is a very long block from Rolling Mead all the way around in this direction. There are several houses, and that mean prevailing setback worked out to be sixty-one feet, which is much deeper than the houses in the immediate area. And at the prior zoning application, we requested a mean prevailing setback that was more in keeping with the houses in the immediate area, and that was forty feet. And the board did see our point in that, and granted that variance. What we're asking for tonight is to be forty-one feet back from the front setback, which is more in line with the houses in the immediate area. The lot is also unique in that it converges, the side lot lines converge as you move to the east. And Princeton defines their lot width by where the lot would be one-hundred feet wide on a line that intersects the sidelines at equal angles. And that line is going approximately through the rear of the house, and we're asking to move that line back by five point three feet. That's really not a hardship, because technically, I guess we could have a house that was smaller that could meet that, but the board at the last meeting actually volunteered to eliminate that and allow for the lot width to go back to provide a better rear yard. The rear yard setback's only fifteen feet, but we're asking for fifty-two feet, and that is much more, but it's this unique situation where the lot becomes less than one-hundred feet wide at equal angles to the sidelines. Where the extreme rear of the house would be, it'd be ninety-eight feet wide, so it's only a matter of a foot or two that we're asking for relief. It's my, well, I'm going to go to another exhibit, which I will call A two. A two is a copy of sheet seventy-five of the Princeton tax map. In pink is the subject lot. On this side of Snowden Lane, we are in the R five, former township zoning district. Across the street was the former borough, R two zoning district. The R two was ten thousand square foot lots, and the R five is twenty-one seven eight oh, or half acre. I have highlighted several lots in the area in yellow that are undersized. I could have went further, but I felt that was plenty. As stated by Mr. Dumont, the only adjoining lot that has a little bit of area to, that it could contribute is adjacent lot twelve, however, it only has point five one acres, and it can only give us point one acres to, point oh one, actually, to contribute, which would then make them undersized, and would not be enough to make us meet the minimum. So, the purpose of this exhibit is to, to show that this lot is in character with most of the lots in the area, and to develop it would not be out of character. It's my opinion that the lot size variance is a hardship, it's something that the applicant cannot remedy by acquiring additional land from adjoining sites. The house will meet the remaining zoning, with the exception of the lot width and the mean prevailing setback. We feel that the mean prevailing setback is better situated at forty feet, or forty-one feet, as opposed to the sixty-one feet. We would think that was out of character, and we believe that the lot width of ninety-eight feet is not, is the minimus, and will not impact the zone plan or the neighbors, and can be approved without any detriment to either.
Also, is your testimony then, that this is, this proposal is consistent with the local surrounding properties, and that's the purpose of your exhibit A two?
Yes.
And do you see that this, there's any detriment to the neighborhood by approval of this application?
No, I see no detriment. I only see benefits of a new house more aesthetically pleasing than the one that was there.
And the new house that you referred to will comply with all the other bulk regulations of the Princeton Land Use Ordinance?
Yes, it will.
Okay. I think that's all we have by way of presentation, we'll be willing to answer any questions.
No questions at this point?
I have a question for Mr. Bridger, relative to this. The, the new, the new code, as it affects R five and garages out front, does this meet this?
No, I should have mentioned that, this was filed prior to the enactment of that code, so this is technically grandfathered from that, but the new code would, would push the garage back approximately sixteen feet from the front of the house, and there's other remedies that they also involved in that code, but this was filed several months before that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Shall we see if there's any, any comment from the public at this point? So if there's anybody who would like to speak to this, who's come here tonight, if you'd come up to the podium here, and we'll have you sworn in, and then you can tell us what's on your mind. So, do you have any, okay, I guess we'll go into executive session now?
Can we, can we, can we discuss, is there any way that this, maybe I should ask Mr. Bridger, was there any way that this could be still under? Bridger, was there any way that this could be still under? Is this, is there any way we could have this revised so that it would be under the new standards in terms of the elevation and the plan itself?
You asking me?
I'm asking, yeah.
I have no idea. I mean, the designer could relate to that possibly better than me, the engineer, but, I mean, they could obviously build a house that complies to it. That's something that they have to answer, though.
Yeah, all right. So then can I direct the question then to the designers of the, of the plan? Is there any way, now that we have this new?
Well, in speaking with the applicant, he has also expressed that he might want to build a smaller house. And I believe that he could meet the newly approved ordinance by building a smaller house. It would fit and most likely would not need the lot width variance in the rear because it's so slight that we're over that line that anything smaller could probably be pulled inward. It certainly would change the garage orientation, so we'd have to look at that. But if you're asking if it's possible, yes, it's definitely possible. I would like to retain the, if possible, I would still want to request the 41-foot mean prevailing setback because I think that would still apply.
Okay.
Of clarification, so they did submit plans. Those are the plans that would be grandfathered. If they don't build that house, then a new design would have to comport with the new ordinance.
And we are aware of that. Any change to what we're presenting tonight would then take away any grandfathering, and we would need to comply with the current ordinance.
There was, there were no comments from any of the neighbors? Go ahead, did you have to just give your name?
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Kulanj Ayden.
And sir, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
First, Mr. Dumont approached the neighbors, and none of them got back to us regarding our offer. On the other hand, we also talked to our neighbors and asked if they have any complaints or if they have any suggestions, comments, and they said no, then they seemed happy with it. So we received no negative comments from them.
Thank you.
Well, okay, so in terms of the elevation that I'm looking at, I mean, it doesn't have the big garage front. I mean, it looks like it conforms somewhat to the new standards in terms of look, yeah? And then I also noticed, I mean, the house is already torn down, so there's no, and there's no, it doesn't look like there's any trees or anything left, so it doesn't look like there'd be an issue of tearing down trees because it looks like they're already gone.
Actually, no trees were removed for the demolition, and under this current proposal, no trees would come down.
Great.
So the trees you saw out there are all existing, yes.
Yeah. So, does anyone want to make the motion? Are we ready to do that? Does anybody have any other questions?
I move we approve the proposal.
With any conditioning?
I think you have your standard one that must be approved by the engineering department and the zoning department and that sort of thing. That probably should go in there.
And I mean, in the past, you did impose, I guess, your standard lighting requirement, that you're not going to have a direct source of light beaming on your neighbors. It doesn't appear that tree removal is required based on the testimony, but normally there is a condition that says the applicant will review and comply with the tree ordinances in town.
And also the spillage onto other?
Correct.
Water spillage, light and water.
This says specifically that the leaders and some have to be connected to the storms.
The prior application showed a connection to a storm drain in front of adjacent Lot 9, and that's an acceptable condition. We would, any new construction would also be connected to that storm drain.
So do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Want to take the rule?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
And Mr. Belvani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next case is 138 Poe Road. Mr. Bridgers, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you.
Mr. Bridger, before you start, I'll just note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, applicants. Dr. Neal and Mrs. Pooja Choxey are the owners, applicants of 138 Poe Road. It's located in the R4 zone in the former Princeton Township. They're seeking a floor area FAR D4 variance to permit construction of a new single-family in exception to the maximum floor area ratio. A C2 variance is requested to exceed the maximum permitted impervious coverage requirement. Property is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 246, 253, and 255. The existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The subject lot is complying with respect to all the applicable bulk regulations. The existing single-family home has been demolished, and the lot is currently vacant. The applicant's proposing to construct a 5,692 square foot single-family home. Property, the proposed plan complies with all the applicable bulk standards except for the floor area ratio and the impervious coverage requirements. The permitted floor area ratio in this zone is 15%, and the proposed FAR is 17.20. The applicant should demonstrate that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area ratio. They requested a C2 variance for the maximum impervious coverage requirement, which is 25.5%, and the proposed impervious coverage is 27.5. Staff notes that it appears that it could reduce the size of the driveway or service walk to eliminate the impervious coverage variance. And this application is similar to the one that was just heard. It was submitted prior to the ordinance change. I believe the garage would be pushed back if it was currently under the current ordinance, but it was grandfathered as it was submitted prior to the approval of that ordinance change. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Bridger. Good evening, members of the board and members of the community, our future neighbors. My name is?
We need you to be sworn in first.
Okay. Sure, my name is Pooja Choxey. I do, sure. Thank you so much for your time this evening. As Mr. Bridger shared, we're here to apply for a variance for the building of our future home. And we wanted to be, spend some time this evening just giving you a little context into why we're applying for this variance. And I think the best way hopefully to do that is just to share a little bit about ourselves and our lives and what is requiring kind of the additional space for the needs of our family. So my name's Pooja, as I've shared. I'm joined by my husband.
Neal.
And we have two young daughters at home. One is sleeping, one is still awake, unfortunately. And we have been working closely with Mr. Angeloon here, with Joe and Michelle, on building a home for our family. We are really excited more broadly about the home, but frankly, about the Princeton community. I grew up in New Jersey. I was born and raised not too far from here, and I currently work in New York City, and Neal works in Philadelphia. So Princeton has been that perfect medium for us for a long time in the back of our mind as we think about where we want to establish roots and settle our family. We also have a daughter who's in kindergarten now and will be entering first grade, and so we're credibly invested, obviously, in our children's education. And finding a town that has a great public education system has also been a motivating factor for us and makes Princeton rise quickly to the top as a place that we would, we would like them to flourish. And then finally, you know, it just, from a location standpoint, from a school standpoint, and mostly from a community standpoint, Neal and I, we currently live in Philadelphia, and we're both active members of our community there. We're both actively involved with the school as well as professionally. And as we look to the type of place that we want to continue to invest our time and we want our children to be a part of, Princeton is exciting for that reason as well. So when we found this particular lot with Joe and Michelle and started to think about the needs of building the dream home, frankly, he shared the plans, and frankly, they met, you know, 95% plus of what we were looking to build. The variance is really in, in request for a little additional space as the life that we lead is frankly very dependent on our childcare system, which comprises mostly of grandparents. And so we want to essentially have adequate and comfortable space for our parents, both sets of grandparents, that spend quite a bit of time with their grandchildren. And so the FAR request is specifically for that simple hardship. It's important for us as we build a home that we hope to be in for 20-plus years, that we are thinking about the needs now and the needs over time that we'll have for our parents as well as, you know, potentially our growing family.
Great, and I'll just add.
Sir, will just swear, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I think, as, as Pooja's, I'll just add to that a little bit more about the context professionally, why we're really looking forward to Princeton. I'm a cardiologist at the University of Pennsylvania, and as you may be familiar, Princeton Hospital and the University of Pennsylvania have recently merged for the hospital system. So one of their missions is to improve the cardiology care in this region and to provide advanced therapies. And so that's one of my missions as a cardiologist at Penn, is to provide improved access for a lot of this community. So I'm looking really forward to doing that here and to bring my work life and my home life together in Princeton. And so the other thing, so, and the other, the other piece of it is that, so I'll just speak a little bit more to our work life, is that Pooja does commute and to New York once a week and does go to California for Google about, about a week at a time. And so that is really the big need for, the big reason for this ask is that during those weeks and because of my schedule at work with what I do, we will have our grandparents come for a week or so to just help out at home. And so currently, they sleep on aero beds in our apartment in the city, and so we're trying to just make their life a little bit easier. And so really, all of this is around that. And I'll just add that we've been looking in Princeton for actually, for a couple of years because we knew this day was coming. We've fallen in love with Princeton for a couple of years now, and we knew that when our daughter would need to go to first grade is when we'd go to the public school here. And specifically, we really like the Littlebrook neighborhood, so we've been looking in that neighborhood. We have friends there, and we just like, we can see ourselves fitting in there. And so we've been through that process. We actually met Joe and have become friendly with him along the way. And fortunately enough, this piece of land came up, and he was actually building this home for himself and offered it up to us, and has a plan approved for it that, as Pooja said, with some modification, would meet all of our needs. And so we're just asking for that small additional size increase.
Were you going to speak to this also?
Hello, my name is Joe Angeloon.
Mr. Angeloon, if you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
To the, to the building aspect of it, the house will meet with all of the current zoning codes, engineering codes. I put together the engineering plan, so you could see that we would address any kind of water management system. Obviously, that would have to go through the engineering department and the zoning department after this, but I just wanted to make, make sure everybody knew that, you know, we would obviously comply with everything that, everything else that is required in the house.
Any questions?
Yeah, a question, sort of, for me, the obvious one. It's, a lot of times, it's rare we have a project or a lot that's bigger than what the zoning requires, wider than what the zoning requires. The lot depth exceeds the requirement, so the question gets to be, why can't you build a totally compliant? Why do we need any variances for impervious coverage and the FAR?
So I'll take, we'll take them separately, the FAR and then the impervious. So the FAR is specifically with the plans that were built within the existing kind of compliance. It didn't have a first-floor bedroom that met the needs of, of our family, especially as we consider just having a sizable bathroom. As our parents, they do spend time with us as they're getting older and not wanting them to walk necessarily up and down the stairs. And so it's really predominantly around making sure that we have space that today as well as within the next 10 to 15 years, as our needs change and their needs change, just provide them that, that comfort. And so the change from the existing plan that was approved to request the 2% increase in FAR was predominantly in just that space. It's the, it's the third garage for the car and then just the increase in the bedroom. The impervious is a little bit different, you're right. That one is a more, I'll take, I'll take that one as a convenience as well as the aesthetic of the home, I thought. The, the front of the land is currently sloped, and so it's not as useful for the kids to play on. And so I thought that to make use of that and to make the convenience of being able to get in and out of the driveway, thought a circular driveway would be, would be a nice to have. It's the total truth.
Any comments right now? I guess we should hear, shall we hear from the public if there's anyone in the neighborhood who would like to speak to this? Please come forward and let our attorney swear you in. Tell us your name and your, where you live.
Okay, I'm Rick Strauss. I live at 147 Poe Road across the street. I've lived in Princeton for 26 years.
Mr. Strauss, will just slow you down. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've lived in Princeton for 26 years, including 22 years on Poe Road. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I've lived in Princeton for 26 years, including 22 years on Poe Road. I wholeheartedly welcome the Choskis to the neighborhood and as do all of us on Poe Road. It is a great community where neighbors really look after each other, and we all love living here, and I'm sure you will too. One thing, though, that makes the community special is that it has an array of modest-sized houses that appeals to young professionals, schoolteachers, guidance counselors, faculty members, and the like. I believe it is critically important to keep this footprint. The free space in each of our yards has been welcoming to children and has given many of the homes a park-like feel. There is no doubt that there's an increased concern across Princeton that open yards are going to be disappearing and are disappearing, and that many communities will lose their intimate character. I therefore ask that the house be built within the regulations. I think while it's framed as only being 2.2% above, you know, increase, that's about still 15% more than the regulation allows about a 700-square-foot larger house than the property is designed for. Most importantly, I do think that there can be some harm to the community, and I think many of the neighbors share that. There have been drainage problems on Poe Road in the past. These have been fixed, but we all do remember that when all of our driveways have turned into rivers during storms. And we also know, and I brought a couple pictures, that when a 5,700-square-foot house was built on Whitmer in the backyard of the current house and in the backyard of 128 Poe Road, there was significant 128 Poe Road, there was significant water pooling, causing the property to be swampy until it was fixed and killing a couple of the shade trees. So again, I welcome the family here, but I ask them respectfully to stay within the guidance and I'm sure, you know, and also ask the board that they keep them within those regulations, so.
Mr. Strauss, did you take these photos?
These were taken by the, our, their former, the neighbors who live at 128 Poe Road, the Allises, who moved out a couple of years ago, but they sent them to me.
Okay, are you familiar with these conditions? Did you observe these conditions?
Yes.
You did?
Yeah, we're all familiar with these.
All right, so you want the board to see those?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll call those O-1. And do you know when they were taken or your experience with them?
Right shortly after that house, 128 Whitmer was built about four years ago.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application? Tell us your name.
Hi, my name is Rahul Shah.
And sir, your address?
119 Random Road.
And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks to the board for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Chauskis today. As I mentioned, I am a resident of Princeton, my wife and I and my children. We live just around the corner from Poe Road, on 119 Random Road, so right in the community there. And first, I want to speak more on a personal basis about the Chauskis and then also touch on the home that they're looking to build. So I've actually known Neil for over 25 years. We grew up together, actually, and went to high school and college and have stayed in touch over all these years. And I've known Pooja for about 15 years since they were married and their, and their young daughters as well. So very close to them on a personal level. And I can, you know, I can attest, I think unequivocally, that they're, will be an amazing addition to the Littlebrook community and the Princeton community in general. They've really contributed a lot to the communities they've lived in and obviously have been leaders in their respective fields professionally and also personally as well. So I think, you know, from that perspective, you know, we'll be really lucky to have them as our neighbors and as Princeton residents. Just as some background on my family, my wife, Anjali, who couldn't be here tonight, she's actually very active in the Princeton community, has actually been on the PTO of the Littlebrook School and is still very active. And so we have a very vested interest in the success of the neighborhood, the well-being of the neighborhood, and of the families and children that live there as well. We actually went through a similar process, a building process, for our home about five years ago and can very much relate to what Neil and Pooja have shared this evening, a similar-sized home, similar footprint, and similar reasons for the, of why we built what we built. Very much focused on family and with young, with young children and professional lives that are very hectic, it's really important to have grandparents, I think, to be part of your lives and for your children as well. So having space that accommodates grandparents comfortably while has grandparents to be with their grandkids, I think is something that all of us would agree is very important. And so I think, you know, from that perspective, the request for their variance that they've, that they've submitted, it makes perfect sense from my perspective and I think, you know, ultimately is really designed to have their, you know, their parents be comfortable and help, help with the children who will be part of the Littlebrook community as well. So, 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 in summary, I would say that I see no harm to the community. I live around the corner. My wife and I, our family, see no harm in their request for variance and I think, you know, we'd be lucky to have them and then welcome them to the community. So thank you.
Hi, Dorothy Azire, 157 Poe Road.
And do you swear firm, ma'am, the testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I welcome you to Poe Road. I've welcomed everybody to Poe Road. I've actually lived off and on in the house for 60 years since it was built. The biggest problem is the water. You guys, where your property is, you're up on top of a hill where the road floods and it'll, and I don't know whether you put something in the storm drain out front or something?
Yeah.
Okay. But the road floods between the two storm drains there and it does come down between our driveways at times when there's heavy rains and everything else. So that's the biggest thing. You're more than welcome. We're all about family on Poe Road. They all take care of the old lady on Poe Road now too, but the house is just too big for the property if you're going to take the green space away. That's it. But you're very welcome.
So first of all, are we, can we respond or no?
Maybe it would be best just to wait until you've heard all the comments and then you can respond.
Great.
Hi, my name is Carrie Elwood of 137 Poe Road.
And Ms. Elwood, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I just like to echo the sentiments of our neighbors. You're very welcome in the neighborhood, your grandparents, the grandparents are welcome in the neighborhood. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware the average size of a home on Poe Road is about 2,600 square feet. With, and my understanding is that without the variance, the house on 138 Poe would be about 4,900 square feet. So that seems about 800 square feet extra they're asking for to accommodate the grandparents. If a large, estimate a large bedroom is about 200 square feet, just seems like a lot of extra space for that accommodation. But again, you know, we, just to echo what Rick said, we just ask respectfully to stay within the regulations.
And Mr. Hanson, do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so I also want to oppose the variances. I'll just sort of reiterate what other people have said. Poe Road has sort of a small-town feel right now and that was one of the, I just recently moved in to 148. And that was one of the things that attracted me to the neighborhood was the small-town vibe. And yeah, it'd be a shame if that was sort of detracted from. I know the variance, the variance doesn't do all of that, but it sort of exacerbates it. Also, I'm a little worried about my property values. If this, if this goes through, I'll be surrounded on now three sides by sort of mansions, quasi-mansions. And I'm worried that if we try and sell this house in the next couple of years, you know, people will only want it as a tear-down. So my house will be sort of of no value. They will only want the plot. The flooding, I was not aware of this flooding that happened. It was, this was in my backyard that this flood, that those pictures occurred. I wasn't aware of it because I only just moved in, but now, now I'm worried now that I've heard about it. And then the last one, I'm sure you guys are aware of this, but just to get it on the record, I'm not sure these variances are even, I'm not sure they're valid. For the C2 one, it explicitly says that the purposes of the municipal land use law have to be advanced by this variance. I actually went and looked at the purposes of the municipal land use law and it would be hard, I would be hard-pressed to say how this variance advances these purposes. I'd like to hear that argument anyway. And the D, the D variance, as I'm sure you know, it says that you need, and this is only valid in particular cases and for special reasons. Again, I'm not sure what these special reasons would be. It's a large rectangular, basically flat lot, which they can build a variety of different houses on. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Polly Strauss, 147 Poe Road.
And Ms. Strauss, do you swear firm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
What I'd like to say is that our neighborhood is truly unique in how caring it is. People really enjoy being together and really look out for each other and help each other in ways very large and small at different times. And I'm not terribly comfortable in this sort of environment, but I care so much about my neighborhood and my neighbors that here I am. And for the reasons stated by my neighbors, I just want to urge in the strongest possible terms that this special permission not be granted. We would like to welcome these wonderful people, but, you know, we hope that there's a brand-new, big, beautiful home there within the current regulations. And we will welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I guess, do you want to respond? It looked like you wanted to earlier.
Uh, yeah, I'll respond to the, with respect to the water and the development of the homes. I understand that there are people in the town that look at these homes as homes that they wouldn't want to live in, but there are people that do. And I've built a number of homes in the area that families such as Neil and Pooja are looking for. They're young professionals that have growing families and different needs than somebody who has been on the block maybe for 22 years or 25 years. It's, it's a, it's a different lifestyle that they live. And that doesn't mean that the house that they lived in is any different than the house that they want to move into. So what we try and do is we try and design the houses that have a different aesthetic. I know there's been neighbors on the blocks that we've built on that don't like the garages coming forward. So we try and build the houses with the garages behind to try and make them more appealing from the street, to give a little bit more street appeal. I know there's been ordinances put in place that people don't like the garages forward. So they've changed the ordinances, they'll give you credit if you move the garage behind. They do all these different types of, different ordinances to allow for the house to be built. And that's one of the reasons why a lot of the houses look the same is because the ordinances become very difficult to deal with because families want to live in what they deem a necessary-sized house for themselves. So hopefully, that will address some of the issues about how the house looks on the block. There are a couple of other homes on the block and there's, they talked about the Sula's house behind on Whitmer, Whitmer Court. That is a fairly large house that has some kind of draining issues that I know they are addressing. Whether there's a 6,000-square-foot house on the, on the lot or a 4,000-square-foot house on the lot, when you dig a hole and you put a new house in the ground, the water finds a new place to go. You have to deal with it. And that's what we, that's what we try and do. You know, I'm a member of the community as well. I live in the community. I'm driving around all the time. The last thing I want to do is upset the neighbors. But there are people that are moving into the neighborhood that want these homes. So it's a delicate balancing act and we try and, we try to address all those needs from the people that are there, the people that are moving in. You know, I'm friends with most of the people, you know, I know them on a daily basis, I see them. And that's the reason why I put the engineering plan together, to show that we will address any kind of water concerns, we will do our best to address it. But there will be water concerns, no matter, even if we put the 5,000-square-foot house up there, there's going to be water. It's a new hole. Water's going to find a new spot to go to. It's what it does. So we will address it with that size, with this size, or any size we put up there that will address the water issue.
Thanks, Joe. So let me just make a couple points. First, thank you for your feedback to our neighbors. You know, ideally, we would have had some of these conversations, but living in Philadelphia with the lifestyle, we, we just weren't able to have some of these conversations. So, so I appreciate your concerns and this kind of activism in the community is one of the reasons we appreciate Princeton and we hope to be as active as, as this group is here. To address, I think, just to address some of your concerns, how we landed at this, I think the vibe here is that we just found a plot of land and wanted to build the biggest house possible and I don't think that's how it is. We're a little bit restricted on how we got here and I agree that I, I like, the reason we're living here is we like the charm of the neighborhood. We, we're not looking for a mansion, but at the same time, what we're looking for is a house that we can live in for 25 years, that our kids can graduate from college here. And, and we just need to build a house that would last that time. And unfortunately, we, neither of us have honed homes. That's the life of a doctor and training for 40 years of your life. And so we have to put our best foot forward right now and that's part of the reason we're asking for a little bit more. But more of the context is we've been looking for, in Littlebrook, for about two years now and there's really just two options. You find a house that you renovate because it's not, you know, up to standards. We've looked, we walked through a lot of them and I've walked with Joe and Joe's flat-out told me, I won't renovate this house. I don't feel comfortable doing it. It's too old to do so safely. And the second option is you buy a home from a builder, which is much like the home that's being described here. So we had this option to do this home and the, part of the reason we're not changing the footprint is because, the main reason we want to move to Princeton is because we want the kids in Littlebrook by first grade. That was really my only and our only criteria for this is that we would try to get the kids into school. And so Joe had a plan that was approved and we took the existing plan and bumped out that wall and to accommodate that first floor for the parents. And that is the, the end of, that is the result of this plan. And so, and, and to address the 700, 800 square foot, the, it's not all going into one room, but it's, it's the extra garage plus that room. And that is what we feel would really make a difference, not just now, but to keeping it, the house together for 25 years. And that's really what we're looking to do. I mean, and so, and, and the last point, we don't want any flooding in our yard either. You know, so I'm all with you. If these are concerns, then we will address them. I mean, but I, I was an engineer and I know, and I was, all the basics, a four, any new house will flood. I don't, I don't think, you know, we're not going to put like seven bathrooms, we're not having a waterfall or anything crazy in the house. It's, it's just going to meet our needs. And, and so obviously, I think flooding, I'm glad you brought it up because that, that's something, we walked the property and tried to make sure there's no flooding, but we will do our best to address that, obviously, ahead of time.
No, I just, I do appreciate just seeing all the neighbors come together despite the fact that we have conflicting, you know, slightly conflicting views right now. The thoughtfulness is appreciated, but I do think that some of that is not specific to this home, regardless of what's going to be built. So that was my one point. On the green space, you know, I, I understand that concern and I think that's one area we've talked about, that the driveway was, was something that we know, we want the feel of the neighborhood and the grass and having the kids be able to essentially use the space like a park, that's part of the reason we're leaving the city to come to the suburbs. So that was one area that we had talked, Mr. Bridger, about as well, and having some flexibility on the driveway.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah. So we would be, you know, if, again, if there was...
Removing the driveway and being compliant with the impervious coverage.
So, yeah, that...
Removing the circular drive?
Circle part, yeah. If we remove the circle part, we would be compliant with the, with the impervious coverage.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea because I think part of the green space concern that your neighbors have in the look in, of the neighborhood, I mean, as lovely as a circular driveway can be, I think that that is different than what your character is normally in Princeton. And also, I think in terms of the water flow and the impervious, now...
Can we also speak to that?
I'm trying. Yeah, you can't hear me? In terms of the, can you hear me now? In terms of the impervious coverage and the water as well, the flooding, I mean, I would think that would help if you don't have this driveway.
Yeah.
Are we ready to go into executive session then? I guess we have, it sounds like we have one change that you're talking about, which would address the impervious coverage and the other issue which you brought up, Mr. Floyd, about the sizes of the house relative to the oversized, oversized lot, if that's a term. I think that's the other thing we're hearing and from the neighbors.
Yes, they could build a compliant house and it would still be, you know, sufficient in my eyes. It's somewhat relative, but, you know, I, I think going up to the maximum permitted in this zone is, sometimes you give up a little bit to live in Princeton. in this zone is, sometimes you give up a little bit to live in Princeton. But I, I just see no reason to, to give the increase far, from a municipal point of view. I understand their needs.
Right.
I, I would, I support Mr. Floyd's position on this. Part of the application is something where you kind of let us know why you think it's good for Princeton, and that didn't really seem to be addressed. I sympathize, I empathize with wanting to have space for parents. I, I get it. I mean, my in-laws are in my house right now, so, and, and boy, try doing that in a 2,400-square-foot house. It's a little bit different. You get really close with your in-laws, it's kind of fun, but I, I can't support this, and I can't support it, so. There is, again, there are no unique circumstances to this lot. There are no hardships apart from what seems to be, and please, it's a convenience, and I get it, but I, I don't see any reason to support this under the rules that we have in existence.
I do agree. I think it's, it's relative, and it's a, it may be a convenience, but what's, the needs of one family, and you can't, you can't, you know, it's an opinion, and so, I understand.
Board members, as Mr. Bridger indicated in his memo, for this kind of a variance, because as I understand it, you've given up the impervious coverage variance, so we're only looking at FAR now. You know, the standard is can the site accommodate increased floor area? So I think in different fashions, there have been comments getting to that concern, that can the site accommodate more? Should it accommodate more? And then also that there's not going to be any negative impact. So unlike other D variances, this standard is, can it accommodate more floor area than what is allowed by the zoning standard? And will it have a negative impact? Even if you find it does, then you balance and say, and what would the impact be if we let that increase in floor area ratio be approved? So I'm not sure that's helpful, but I think that the standard that Mr. Bridger identified in his memo is really consistent with the concerns that Mr. Tenenbaum and Mr. Floyd identifies. It's, it's putting it a little different way, but it's essentially, do you feel the site can accommodate more FAR than, than what the zone allows? And do you feel that it's going to have a negative impact if you allow that to occur?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I will patiently and eagerly listen to my other colleagues' opinions on this.
Well, I, I understand your, your point, and then after hearing from Ms. Casey about can it accommodate it and will it have a negative impact, if I were answering those two questions, I would say it can accommodate it without a negative impact if the impervious coverage is within the limits. At the same time, I feel like you arrived at the size house that you did just because there was an existing plan, and then you popped on the garage and, you know, the additional bedroom. Had you started with, these are the limits, can we make a house within those limits? I, I do think that that would have been possible at the same time. I, I think, you know, from where you started, given your program, you, you arrived at this size house, so that's, you know, my, my thoughts about where we are on this.
So just, so just to clarify, so we're talking about an additional 700 square feet. If there was, 700 square feet less would bring it into compliance with, am I, am I understanding that right? And that's the additional bedroom? And that, the, the idea was to add, I'm going to ask the owners, that the idea was to add that bedroom downstairs for the parents, that, in that extra garage space was what brought it, bumped it out to the extra piece? So, I mean, does that, does that fall into a criteria of hardship? And so some of us are saying it doesn't fall into a criteria of hardship. We're saying that that is more of a want than a need, so it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to judge that.
Mr. Bridger, just to clarify, does the, the garages are or are not counted as part of the FAR?
They, they are counted as FAR.
They are counted as FAR.
The new ordinance has a provision, if they're behind the, the house completely, they're exempt up to 300 square feet of floor area ratio. But that, you can have both, so they applied under the old, that's what they're being judged at, but the new ordinance currently gives you a credit if the garages are behind the most rear portion of the house, up to 300 square feet.
So one potential compromise would be to eliminate a bay and to have exterior parking for one of the cars. That would accommodate the living needs internal to the home while trying to fit within the compliance requirements of the existing ordinance. Eliminate a garage bay, you eliminate a large portion, if not all, of your FAR issue. Park a car outside, you can still have the living spaces that you need for your grandparents, you know, as they're aging, having the bathroom downstairs, you know, the large bedroom suite. The inconvenience of having your car outside, I don't know, would constitute an undue hardship as far as I'm concerned, as it relates to the zoning, and you would be in compliance.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So I, again, I, I think that's an excellent idea. From the 11 years that I've been on this zoning board, I don't think it's been our responsibility to redesign what applicants submit. I know we have, Steve is a phenomenal architect, we have distinguished attorneys, we have outstanding members in the community who are all able to add value, I think, to this process, but I don't think this is necessarily the place for doing so. So with the greatest amount of respect, we have before us an application where they're asking for us to, they're asking for variance, our, from what I understand, and please, Mr. Bridger, if I'm wrong, or Ms. Casey, if I'm incorrect, my understanding is that our role is to say yea or nay based upon what's in front of us. It's not incumbent upon us to redesign or come up with alternatives, though I think they're very valuable, and the suggestions are pretty reasonable, if you ask me. But all that being said, again, I'm open to listening to other things that are speaking to this here, and if other people have comments, please, by all means, otherwise, I'm ready to, to submit a motion. So I, again, I'm happy to listen.
Would there be anything wrong with making that kind of a condition, though? Or making that kind of a judgment here?
Well, but if that were a condition, then they wouldn't, they wouldn't need the variance, correct? I don't think so. If they eliminated the garage bay, then would they still need a variance, or no?
Well, they're, they're, let's, I'm going to use your numbers, what, 700 square feet over approximately? So the garages, on this plan, it's 23 feet in length, and I'm going to guess it's probably 14 feet, 13 feet wide, so you're still probably half of the increase in FAR. It's not going to take it all the way down, but it would reduce it to, I'm going to guess, almost half of what the, the request is.
I mean, just, just to, in the spirit of us sharing our opinions more with each other in advance, I, I do, I don't have, I don't, I have a problem with seeing this oversized lot and then having additional, you know, having a request to have more impervious surface and a larger house. And I think you put your finger on what made that happen, how that came about. And I, and I remember, and I read what you gave us about a sense of urgency, I think we probably all did, so maybe running in our minds that if we say, you know, "Sorry, go back to the drawing board," that may affect your timing. Again, I don't think that, that is not ultimately our responsibility, but it may be in our minds. But I am, I, I would have a hard time supporting it. I'm heartened by the idea of having at least the impervious surface percentage in line with what it should be, and that, that I think would, as somebody said, I think you said, it also is more in keeping with the neighborhood character, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, and actually, when you look at the plan, too, I mean, if you were to take away a bay or cut down, I mean, in terms of the look of the house from the street side, it's still going to cover the same amount. I mean, it's what's internally, but to look at the house externally, I don't think it's going to make a difference, you know? I mean, you'd have to really just revise it and make it smaller, I mean, if you were going to work in that.
It would make some more difference in terms of impervious surface, though.
In terms of impervious, yes, yes. If that's, if that's what our main concern is, I mean, it depends what we're really responding to.
One of the two, I'd say, or more.
But I think getting rid of that circular driveway and having it grass and green would definitely help in terms of the look and the, some of the neighborhood concern.
But, but the issue is the floor area ratio. We've, we've solved for the impervious. So if, if, if we were going to grant a variance with one bay, that, that would require a variance to, to say you limit, that would be a condition of granting a variance if, if we were to accept a two-bay garage as an acceptable size.
Anybody else want to weigh in? No?
I move, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Weigh in a little bit. I certainly understand what is being proposed, and I think the neighbors have every right to be concerned about the size of the house, but I would also, I think I could argue that taking it down 700 square feet isn't going to make a whole lot of difference in terms of the neighborhood and the size of the house. So I feel a little bit different about it.
It's a precedent. It might set a precedent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the other thing, too, is, I mean, the elevation drawings, I mean, they do, they look nice. I mean, they don't look like a big, the garages are on the side of the house. I mean, they're not in the front of the house, which was a big change that we did with the characteristic study, so, I mean, at least, I mean, I, I think it, it looks nicer than, you know, it looks like a nice plan. So I'll just chime that in. It doesn't really help in much.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible, or is it past time?
Sure.
I may do it. I have a 194. A question would be, sure. I can speak pretty well.
Mr. Hewitt, do you swear a firm any testimony you may give will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
The word precedent was brought up, and that would be a concern. There's, of, of the, maybe 20 houses that are up and down either side of Poe Road, a large number of them were built all at the same time. They're, they're nearly identical, and they were built in 1959, 1960. They will be candidates in a similar way for, to be torn down and have a, a home replace them. So if there's a precedent for, and I don't know how it works with, with the zoning board, but if there is, if it does create a precedent that these two types of variances or other similar variances become, that other applications could attach to those, then you've really created a completely different situation, I think, in terms of character, et cetera, but just more nuts and bolts, water issues, impervious surface, et cetera. So that would be my concern, really. I've been through, through some of this in a house that we built ourselves. We embodied a state park, and we had to get a commission's approval first, or first, actually township, commission, township, and back and forth, there were requirements needed. It was, it was very complicated, and I know that we had to make pretty sizable concessions on, on this, and that when you have sort of your dream home, you can make something perfect, beautiful, if you take another look at, at what you're doing, without creating this sort of slippery slope in, in this neighborhood. And, and if you, if you drive around the neighborhood, speaking to what Missy said, right now, there are huge patches of ice everywhere, sort of unspoken, unknown springs that are coming out, that are covering entire driveways. So I think some of the concerns are real. Yes, a, a new home does create a big, a, a big, you dig a hole, you put a new house in, but I think if everyone is 700 square feet too large, all the way up and down that block, then it, it changes things, not only character-wise, but in, just in terms of where the water goes, how things work, what happens, I think, in the whole rest of the town, maybe. I don't know your rules on that. So that, that's, would be my concern at that, at this juncture. All right, thanks.
So to, to his point about the icy patches, the dangerous icy patches on the streets, those are old homes that have their water leaking, there are some pumps going and, and dispersing into the streets. We have drywells put on the property. The newer homes are paying, pay more attention to the drainage in the area. I mean, there's brooks and creeks and, and that's why, why it's called Littlebrook. I mean, every house basically is on a brook and a, or a creek, and a lot of the older homes do not address those problems. So yes, you have on Shady Brook, and I know exactly what he's talking about, there are two spots where the homes are pumping water right into the street, and there are patches of ice that are, you could play ice hockey on them. That's how thick they are. So we would address that with a new home.
So would you like to commit your motion?
If there's no further discussion, I, I suggest we move out of executive session, and I'd like to propose a motion that we do not approve the variance.
Is there a second? Okay. So we're voting on, the motion is to not approve this application. A yes is to disapprove.
To deny. To deny the application. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Hi, yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Striver?
No.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Balbanis?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
No.
Thank you.
This kind of a variance needs five votes to approve, and this is a motion to deny, which has been carried, so the application's been denied.
Just like to say thank you for your time and your thoughtful consideration. I, I will say, though, as much as welcoming as you all were, the statement, sometimes you have to pay the price to live in Princeton, is not very welcoming, but, but I understand all of your concerns, and we will take them all into consideration. Thank you.
All right. So that's it for tonight? Thank you, everyone, and I'd like a mo, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's it, right? Oh, okay. Adjourn.